I will call the city council meeting of City of Fort Atkinson to order for the Tuesday, May 6, 7:00 PM. Clerk Ebert, we call the roll, please.
Counsel Huckabee. Counsel Johnson. Counsel Lesko here.
Here.
Counsel Schultz.
Here.
President Jacob.
Here. Item three, public hearings. Tonight, we have none. Number four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record we'll call upon: name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken upon any public comments unless item is also elsewhere on the agenda. Note for Zoom attendees, if you're wishing to speak, please raise your virtual hand as the chat box is not monitored during the meeting, and those on the call must be muted when not recognized to speak. We have nobody signed up in person, so we will take first call for in-person or Zoom to the comments. Second call for anyone wishing to speak. Seeing none, we will close out public comment. Item five, consent agenda. The consent agenda is outlined below, hereby presented for action for the city council. Items may be removed by the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, items 5A through 5D.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, petitions, requests, and communications. Item 6A is recognition of Greg and Anna Albert as winners of the Historical Preservation Commission's 2025 Historic Preservation Award. Museum Director Mary Lee.
Yes, I'm bringing quite the crew with me, sorry. This is a momentous occasion, so I have the privilege of also working with our Historic Preservation Commission here in town, and this year we are awarding the inaugural annual award for historic preservation. So it is an award designed to recognize homeowners or business owners who have completed a home restoration or building restoration project and maintained the architectural and historic integrity of the home. And this year, we are very proud to award that to Greg and Anna Albert, who own the Marsden Hoard House located at 323 Merchants Avenue. It's the lovely home with the huge wraparound porch that we all admire when we drive by. That's their home. And so we are very proud to award this to them. They recently undertook a restoration project on their front porch and maintained the integrity and character of the front porch in order to preserve it for the home. They also recently had a baby. I'm not certain which is more exciting, this award or the baby. And unfortunately, her name's not on the plaque, sorry. It's just the two of you, but I was hoping we could do a quick photo, just showing the city council's recognition and support of this award for the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm also here with three members of the Historic Preservation Commission. We have Brandon Thornton. I apologize. I worked with him for years, I should remember. Brandon Thornton, Ellen Bogner, and Fred York are all serve on our Historic Preservation Commission and assist the city with many things. So we could step on both of you.
Item 6B, review and possible action. A proclamation recognizing EMS Week, May 18 through the 24th, 2025, and International Firefighters' Day, May 4th, 2025.
Thank you. Oh, okay, so we have our proclamation recognizing EMS Week and International Firefighters' Day. May 18 through the 24th, 2025 marks the 51st year of National EMS Week. It's a time to show gratitude to EMTs and paramedics who provide lifesaving care across the nation every day. And specifically, Captain Mike Borple is here, who provides that service to our folks locally and has been very busy lately, so we appreciate that. International Firefighters' Day is also celebrated on May 4th, 2025. So we are very lucky to have a full-time fire and EMS department located in the city, and we value the important service our first responders provide. So, as I mentioned, EMS Week celebrates the paramedics, EMTs, and other EMS professionals, and International Firefighters' Day honors and remembers the firefighters who have lost their lives while serving and expresses gratitude to those who continue to serve. So there's no financial impact for this proclamation, but staff does recommend that the city council approve the proclamation recognizing EMS Week and International Firefighters' Day.
I move to approve the proclamation and recognize EMS Week, May 18 through the 24th, 2025, and International Firefighters' Day, May 4th, 2025, in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we do have a proclamation, so if Chief Peterson and Captain Borple would like to come up and accept it, grab some pictures.
Item 6C, review and possible action relating to a proclamation recognizing the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks' Week, Manager Housman.
Thank you. So this is one of my favorite weeks of the year. It's it's Professional Municipal Clerks' Week, so that is celebrated May 4th through the 10th, initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. So it's important to recognize the contributions of our staff. Our clerk's office provides the professional link between our citizens and the local governing bodies and agencies of other levels of government here. So our our staff in the clerk's office are ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all residents through transparent and accountable government practices. So staff, there is not, again, a financial impact for this proclamation, and staff does recommend that the council approve the proclamation recognizing the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks' Week and recognize the city's professional municipal clerk, Michelle Ebert, and her staff, Deputy Clerk Courtney Tome, Utility Billing Specialist, Karen Rose, and Deputy Treasurer Lance Lombitz.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks' Week.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? I will just state that, you know, the clerk's position is very underlooked position in the city. Without a clerk, no municipality will, would survive. So that being said, all those in favor of supporting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And again, we have a proclamation that we will present to Michelle Ebert and her and her team.
Item 6D, review and possible action relating to the proclamation recognizing National Police Week, May 11 through the 17th of 2025, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th, 2025.
Thank you. So in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation that designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. So this year, Police Week is May 11 through 17th, 2025. And during this week, we commend our police officers who serve the city and keep our citizens safe. It's a time to recognize the great service our law enforcement professionals provide to the community, and our city council has, during our orientation session tonight, got to hear a little bit more about those services that we provide. So we appreciate those who have made the ultimate sacrifice to serve and protect, as well as those who continue to to serve us in our community every single day. So again, the proclamation is not expected to have a financial impact, and staff does recommend that the council approve the proclamation recognizing Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Well, I move to approve the proclamation recognizing National Police Week, May 11 through the 17th, 2025, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th, 2025.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we do have a proclamation and some of our wonderful police officers and members of our command staff to present it to.
Item 6E, review and possible action relating to the proclamation declaring the month of May as Building Safety Month in the city of Fort Atkinson, Manager Housman.
Thank you. So this is the last one for this meeting. I promise it's not the last one forever. Building Safety Month is an international campaign in May to raise awareness about building safety. The campaign reinforces the need for modern, regularly updated building codes and helps individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures. The city of Fort Atkinson is lucky to have a proactive building inspector and zoning administrator, Judd Drager, who helped to update the city's zoning code last year and enforces our codes every day. The city appreciates Judd's important work to make the city a safe place to live, work, and visit. So staff does recommend that the city council approve the proclamation recognizing May as Building Safety Month in the city of Fort Atkinson, and we have a proclamation to present if that action is taken.
I move to approve the proclamation declaring the month of May as Building Safety Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 6F, recognition of the 2024-2025 City Council President, David Lushkow here. Manager Housman.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to present David Lesko here with an engraved gavel to commemorate his time as the city council president from April 2024 to April 2025. David served on the city council from 2009 to 2019, and then on the Plan Commission from 2019, through his selection by the city council to fill an open seat in 2023, and he was just re-elected to his sixth full term on the city council. So thank you, David, for your work as city council president over the last year. Had a lot of challenges, but even more successes, and I appreciate your work with the finalization of a development agreement with Intrepid Investments for Ridgeview Estates, your work on negotiating our first fire union contract, your work on negotiating the wage reopeners for the police union contract, as well as serving as an interview panelist for several of our key positions within this organization and many other items. So your leadership and support are appreciated, and we thank you for your service, and I will present you with this incredible gavel. And as he is currently on crutches, I will let him stay there. And Michelle, if you want to just
And thank you. It was my honor to serve in that role on the last year on behalf of the full council and the community of March. I appreciate that.
All right. Item seven, resolutions and ordinances. Tonight, we have none. Item eight, reports of officers, boards, and committees. A, city manager's report, Manager Housman.
Well, I'm going to apologize in advance because it's been three weeks since the last meeting, so I have a lot to mention. So it is lobby season in the Capitol in Madison, and the city has been well represented. On April 23rd, Parks and Recreation Director Ben Dayton represented the city and the Wisconsin Parks and Recreation Association to discuss the positive impact that public spaces and recreation programs have on our communities and to advocate for reinstatement of the Knowles-Nelson Stewardship Grant Program. Also, on April 23rd, Fire EMS Chief Bruce Peterson testified at Senate and Assembly hearings relating to bills that would increase training opportunities and funding for EMS provision in the state and locally, of course. Councilmember Huckabee, Chief Peterson, Clerk Ebert, and I will be at the Capitol tomorrow with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities for their Capitol Connections Day. We will be advocating for legislation surrounding local control, economic development, TIF changes, housing, EMS, and infrastructure. Building Inspector and Zoning Administrator Jed Drager and I attended a MADREP, which is the Dane County Regional Economic Development Organization, event in Madison on April 23rd, which is why we weren't on the Capitol that day. The event centered around responding to requests for information, or RFIs, from site selectors and featured a session with Deb Reinbold and Ben Waymire relating to landing the Kikkaman Project, which was done through a national site selection. Council President Jacob and I attended the Jefferson County Legislative Breakfast on April 25th. Representatives of our federal legislators, as well as several Jefferson County state legislators and local elected officials were present. I spoke on behalf of the cities and villages in Jefferson County relating to the state budget and legislative priorities. Clerk Ebert and I attended the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Spring Conference in the Wisconsin Dells on April 28th and 29th. We attended many excellent sessions relating to liability and property insurance, human resources budgeting, and then the community roundtables as well. City staff and chamber staff have been working with the Wisconsin Rural Partners for the last several months to prepare for the Wisconsin Rural Partners Annual Summit, which took place at the Riverstone on April 30th, or, yes, April 30th and May 1st. Sarah Weir and I delivered a bus tour for about 20 people, and Shawna Wesley with the chamber provided a downtown walking tour with special guest Guzzo Pence, who actually is the artist who did the murals, the Lorraine Niedeker poem murals. The tour ended at Patty Shack with a reception, so we appreciate Erin and Mitch Patterson as well. Five Fort Atkinson business owners participated in a panel discussion about doing business in this community, and there was a session featuring Shoton Basu and the Boost Fort Atkinson Business Competition. So overall, the summit was very successful. We received positive feedback, and Fort Atkinson was very well represented to the attendees and speakers and guests. The city council orientation continues with our facility tours that took place on Friday, May 2nd, and the session tonight, just before this council meeting, which introduced all of our city department and division directors to council members. And the last session will take place on May 20th before that council meeting and will feature finances and budget information. So that one's going to be really exciting. On the tour on Friday, we stopped by the ribbon cutting for Little Rainbow's Play Place, located at 1355 North High Street. Little Rainbow's received a capital catalyst revolving loan from the city to start that business in that location, so we're very proud of them. The Hoard Historical Museum just wrapped up part two of the 63rd Mary Hoard Art Show. The session featured art from Jefferson County high school students and adults. Next week, many members of the city's team will attend a crisis intervention partner course. So we have unfortunately noticed an uptick in folks visiting the municipal building and other city facilities who are in crisis, and this training will assist our team in identifying signs and providing appropriate responses depending on the situation. So we're very pleased to have our staff do some training. Also, next week, the Plan Commission will hold a public meeting on May 13th to review the draft recommendations from the city's planning consultants relating to the Jamesville Avenue and Main Street corridor plans. The information has been posted to the city's website for public review, so if people want to check that out before the meeting, they can get some additional flavor for what's being recommended. And finally, there have been four structure fires in Fort Atkinson over the last three weeks. Because the city has a full-time fire department, as well as a robust network of part-time firefighters, there are at least six, maybe more, structures that are still standing today. So the department had water on all of those fires within five minutes, and any additional time required for a fully part-time department would have allowed those flames to spread to nearby structures. So I just want to recognize and thank all of our public safety responders who have been doing amazing work here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Item nine, unfinished business. Tonight, we have none. Item 10, new business. Item 10A is review and possible action relating to a proposal for a retail market study from Growth Services Group, Manager Housman.
Thank you. So we continue to pursue development opportunities in all areas to support our tax base as well as quality of life. Over the past couple of years, the Plan Commission has approved two retail projects that were not constructed. A Dollar Tree store to be located along Madison Avenue and a Dollar General Market to be located in an outlaw along Jamesville Avenue. Both companies submitted site and building plans that met our codes, and the Plan Commission did approve both projects, however, neither was constructed. So we want to learn more about that, right? We want to know maybe why, why they weren't constructed and why we don't have a lot of retail. So I did discuss this with our partners at Thrive ED, and I was provided with a couple, with names of a few companies that provide retail market studies for communities to determine actual gaps in service areas and then pursue development, which may fill those gaps. So I did review a couple of those websites and found that Growth Services Group seemed to have the best experience providing market studies based on survey data in more rural communities. So I did reach out to the company to schedule a meeting, and after that introductory discussion, I asked them for a proposal to conduct a retail markets survey and study in Fort Atkinson. So that proposal is included in the packet. We did check references for this company, as it is not one that I've worked with before. All the references were positive, and all of the municipalities that use that service would use them again. The cost of the study is $12,500 plus travel expenses, so it's estimated at $16,500. The travel expenses include folks from this organization coming to Fort Atkinson to do some survey work and some, and also survey work with people and then identifying sites, working with staff to identify sites that are ready for development. We propose to use funds from our Lodging Citiescape Room Tax Fund, or Fund 8, to pay for this study. There is a, there has been a substantial fund balance in Fund 8, which is where the city's 30% of the room tax funds are allocated. So the other 70% go to support tourism through our chamber and their tourism department. So we did have a positive fund balance at the end of 2024 of about $138,000 in Fund 8. This is the same fund that we use to support the Boost Fort Atkinson Business Pitch Competition. So this study was not included in the budget, but we do feel that it will be very beneficial to to the city as well as our continued efforts to attract retail establishments. I'd be happy to take any questions. We do recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the agreement for services with Growth Services Group at a cost not to exceed $16,500 to be funded through Fund 8.
Yeah, I think it's a great use of the room tax funds. I'm wondering if, as you were making some some calls and checking on this entity, did you get a sense that the communities that have completed that survey, that it served as a catalyst to kind of attract some new business, or like, what was, what did you find from those that had completed the study?
I didn't, I had Sarah in my office check those references. What I asked her to check was if, you know, if they would work with them again. I think from the materials that are, the sample materials that are included in the packet shows that they did, you know, identify sites, they identified uses for those sites, and then they prepared information to for those municipal employees or boards or committees to, you know, to go out and find, you know, establishments to fill those roles. But, but no, I do not have information as to whether or not they were successful in finding additional retail.
Yeah, the two sample studies, it looks like there's just tons of really good information in there, so it would, it will, assuming we approve this, it would be interesting to see what the results are for our community.
I know I spoke with a business owner in town this weekend. They brought up about, you know, this is a good idea, they're glad to see something, but the biggest concern is the capital needed to start a business nowadays, and they figure you need about five years to get one off the ground, so hopefully with this, if we do, it'll kind of shed the light on that as to what we need in town, maybe give us, I know we have the revolving loan fund that maybe helps support some of these businesses to come here too.
Yeah, I just want to highlight, one of the biggest concerns, I think, that are brought up to me by residents was that they had felt that our building codes were too restrictive that businesses wouldn't want to build certain styles of buildings to meet the code. However, I want to highlight something you had mentioned earlier, was that we have had businesses that understood what the zoning codes were, submitted plans that adhered to them, and then backed out at a later date. So I think it's more than just that. It is, you know, there might be other underlying things going on that is beyond just the building codes that we have, or the zoning codes that we have, so.
Well, and I think that's one of the concerns I have as well from business owners that I've talked to that have looked at, you know, purchasing out in the Clement Business Park, but then have looked at the codes and the building requirements for like having a steel structure and those types of things, and the cost of the land. And they were able to build their business in a neighboring community for what they figured was about $300,000 less than what they could do it for here. So my reservation on this market survey is, you know, and looking back at the DG Mart, you know, they, I know they came in at the last minute and wanted to request a variance for the facade materials, because the, is it A1 or 1A materials? What's the classification?
Class, class one.
Class one. Building materials were outside of their budget for what they could build this for, and that they've built them across the nation, and they were requesting that they might be able to submit for a variance. And the troubling thing to me is that the plan was approved. And the troubling thing to me is that the plan was approved to go through as it sat with our code, but a variance was not encouraged. And I really believe that when we hear variances, whether we approve them or not, it gives us a chance to check our code to see if it's, if it is business friendly, what the actual impediments are for businesses to come here. So my worry is with approving this market survey is that if we haven't addressed that or looked into that, that we're going to attract these new businesses, they're going to go through the process and they might find the same thing. You know, but it's not economically feasible to afford our code to start a business. So that would be my concern.
I'm on board with the concept of looking at variances because in my, this is my eighth year on council. I've yet to see variances happen. If they are, they're pretty insignificant and rare. And I think that they should be more of a case-by-case discussion as to what makes their circumstance special or not special and whether or not we should consider it.
So I think there'd be great information that would come from this. I would prefer that it was later, after we've had a chance to dig into that a little bit.
I've talked to some of the realtors in town and they have told me that people approach them about purchasing business property anywhere but here. And I guess I'd like to discover why that would be.
I will just mention that our zoning, our zoning codes are not excessive of any other incorporated municipality in the area. So many of our other municipalities, I mean, townships are different obviously, but many of other municipalities have very similar building requirements. But the matter on the agenda tonight is this retail market study, so.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for services with Growth Services Group at a cost not to exceed $16,500 to be funded through Fund Eight.
Second.
You have a motion and a second and further discussion? Seeing none. They have a motion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item 10B, review and possible action relating to a contract with Artisan Graham for the sale of the city-owned lots on Maple Grove subdivision, Manager Housman.
Thank you. In November of 24, the council approved a preliminary plat for the Maple Grove subdivision. This plat consists of eight total parcels, six of which are owned by the city and the remaining two are owned by the Fort Atkinson School District. So the, that original staff report from November, as well as the plan commission report are attached in the packet for review. The subdivision plat has now been reported and those city-owned lots are ready for sale. Last year, we anticipated being able to sell these lots without assistance. However, due to staffing vacancies and limited capacity, we are recommending that we enter into a contract with Artisan Graham. And also at the time in November, we recommended a sale price of $55,000 each. Upon advice from professionals in the field, we would like to reduce that to 40,000 as a more realistic for the market, for that size and location, infill location of the parcels. So the staff proposes to list the parcels for 40,000 each. And then Artisan Graham's commission is proposed to be 3.5% of, if the listing firm is able to procure the buyer and 2.4% if there is a buyer's agent involved. And the proceeds from the sale would be returned to the general fund, the wastewater utility fund and the water utility fund in proportion to which those funds paid for the infrastructure improvements that allowed for the creation of these, of these lots. Because if you remember, we had some utility work that needed to be done before we could subdivide these lots. So the staff does recommend that the city council approve the contract with Artisan Graham to sell the city-owned parcels in the Maple Grove subdivision and authorize the city manager and the city attorney to execute closing contracts for the sale of the lots.
I feel silly, but I'm unfamiliar with Artisan Graham. Are they a local company?
Their offices in Madison, but all of the two realtors that we work with are Brandon Housley and Jeff Hoye, who both live in the Fort Atkinson area. They're also, Artisan Graham is our group that represents the city with the Clement Business Park.
So has this opened up at all to other local realtors?
It was not. We worked with Artisan Graham on this. They provided a proposal and we are recommending approval of that proposal.
I will just say I had a few local realtors reach out to me today. Very disappointed that they weren't offered the chance to at least put in a proposal as to selling these. They felt that a local realtor would be way more invested in this, knowing local buyers. That's most local realtors have it where the people are coming wanting to buy land or that in town for residents.
We do have Brandon Housley here, if the council would like to hear. Brandon, can you state your name and address? Make sure the microphone is on and state your name and address for the record, please.
Brandon Housley, W5840 Hackworth Road. So I am from Fort Atkinson, been here the better part of 41 years. Jeff Hoye, same thing. He lives two miles from me. So we are, I mean, our address is not local, but Jeff and I, Holly Burdner, Danielle, all within the Fort Atkinson area. So Corey Lucky is our only guy that lives outside of the 53538 area code, so.
Like I said, I just, I had several other realtors reach out to me concerned about this. You know, Artisan Graham is Madison company, they figure, so.
Gotcha.
And I'm more comfortable with you involved than I would have not known even who they were.
Gotcha, yeah. Appreciate it, but yeah. I fully understand. If you guys want to interview other realtors, I'm not offended by that whatsoever.
I will just mention that professional services don't require an RFP or any sort of competitive process. We already had a relationship with Artisan Graham. They provided, we asked them to provide a proposal and that is what we have for the council tonight to consider.
I guess my question would be, would we expect any higher like sale prices for the lots or benefit to the city regardless of who we worked with?
I would not expect a significantly lower commission or a significantly higher price for the lots.
These lots are significantly smaller than most lots in town, are they not?
They are in our TF10 zoning district and they meet the requirements of that zoning district. So I wouldn't say that they're significantly smaller than anything. They are infill and the plat is included. I don't know the area of these lots off the top of my head, but they're pretty common size for infill development in this part of the city.
They're right around point two, I believe.
700 to 8800 is the last one. The plan that provided in the city council packet.
I get clarification on the commission. So it's 3.5 if the listing firm is able to procure the buyer and 2.4 if there's a buyer agent.
Yeah.
So it'd be that 3.5 plus 2.4 then, or?
No, so how it works is 4.8%. So that's providing 2.4% to our firm. And then let's say somebody from Shore West, First Webber, Remax comes in 2.4, 2.4. But let's say that somebody contacts our firm directly and works with me. We would reduce that from 4.8 to 3.5%.
Okay.
I move to approve the contract with Artisan Graham to sell the city-owned parcels in the Maple Grove subdivision and authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute closing contracts for the sale of the lots. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Item 10C, review and possible action relating to the proposals for a classification and compensation study for the city of Fort Atkinson, Manager Housman.
Thank you. At the March 18th city council meeting, staff, or excuse me, the city council authorized staff to publish a request for proposals for a classification and compensation study. We have the memo and information that went to the council on March 18th in the packet as well as the 11 proposals that the city received from professional consulting firms with experience in this field. So I reviewed all 11 proposals that which range in cost from $20,475 to $67,650. I did provide a summary table that includes some items that I reviewed from each of those proposals. And the staff does recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to contract with MGT for the classification and compensation study as outlined in their proposal, but at a cost not to exceed $28,475. And I will mention their base proposal was $20,475. However, we did discuss internally the desire for at least one to two in-person meetings. That $20,000 figure only included virtual meetings. So we would like kind of that personal touch and as well as the cost for job descriptions. So we will need our job descriptions updated, even if it is minor updates relating to what the new classification will be for some of those job descriptions. We have, we've been updating them regularly as positions become open, but without any formal human resources staff, we have not had anybody have the time to be able to update all of the rest of the job descriptions. So that is something that we wanted to be included with this classification and compensation study. So the, it was included in the 2025 budget with an estimated cost of $30,000. And we identified the source of funds was the American Rescue Act Plan, or American Rescue Plan Act funds. And those have been placed in an assigned fund balance account to be utilized with the budget and planning documents that have been approved by the council. And this is, is one of them. So at the $28,475, this proposal is not the least expensive. But again, we have several to choose from and the least expensive option is not always the best option. And as the person who will be managing this project internally and working with staff on this, again, it is my recommendation that we go with MGT for a total of 28,000, not to exceed $28,475. I would be happy to answer any questions.
So the 28,475, does that include the job descriptions or is that just the travel?
Nope, that includes job descriptions and the travel.
It is the travel too. I mean, the job descriptions.
The county is doing something similar to this, I was told. They're actually using a company with, called TrueComp that allows you to access software, comes in more of a yearly subscription to help update these. Did we look into anything of that nature? So we'd have continuing updates on this or?
The subscription is an ongoing annual operating cost. And I, this is an effort to avoid annual ongoing operational costs with using one-time funds from the ARPA to pay for a classification and compensation study. I do believe there is a year of support included with this proposal from MGT. And there would be subscription options, I'm sure, available. But our operating funds, as you all know, are significantly harder to come by than one-time funds such as this.
I just want to make sure that if we're not doing this and right away out the gate, we're maybe behind on pay off the bat because they might be looking at previous data versus something. So if we need to update something right away, there was that assistance for that.
Just looking at the schedule and the timeline, if they are able to start within four to six weeks and then it looks like about a 16-week timeline that we could expect somewhere around September, October then, that we'd have the results with enough time to like, maybe start planning for the 2026 budget or start thinking about it a little bit about how it may impact.
Yes, the goal is to, depending on the results of the classification compensation study, the goal would be to over time implement the recommendations from the study in a way that's sustainable and affordable.
But it is reasonable to think that we could get some results back this year and kind of start mapping something out.
Yes.
That could begin in 2026.
Yes.
And is there a plan, you know, once we do this study and, you know, moving forward, like my position at my company is keeping job descriptions up to date, also doing the market research to see what's competitive when we have new, new positions that need to be filled. Is there going to be something put in place that we won't be doing this again in 10 years? That we're taking it, now we're completely up to date? And as new positions come open, that we're doing that work on the front end?
Well, as I mentioned, we don't have any dedicated positions for that type of thing. So that is challenging. Typically, you know, when we go out to market for a position is when we find out where we are in the, as far as pay goes. And we've had to make adjustments throughout the last 10 years. Obviously, there haven't been zero adjustments over 10 years, right? We have adjusted things. And, you know, the goal would definitely be to keep that classification and compensation up to date. But with limited resources, sometimes some things like this don't get addressed, but for once every few years.
So does that fall on the city managers? Is that the city manager's responsibility for all the departments? Or is it the department heads that do it for their?
We work, we work as a team, but ultimately, yes, it is my, my job to do that.
Okay. And then one other question. I saw that there's a Whitewater company on here and I believe the city's worked with them before for the city engineer position.
For the Public Works Director position, yes. And, and for other positions as well. Those were recruitment services. And I feel like the classification and compensation study going through MGT is a better value and a better fit for what we're trying to accomplish.
If I may, Manager Housman and I attended the League Insurance Conference this past week. At MGT was actually session presenter. And I was in the back room and they made a presentation on some of these studies and I was very impressed with them. So I truly support this as employees, our best asset and council, you saw earlier with representation of everybody. And the tight budgets that we have to stay with the parameters of every single day. You know, we're very conscious of this, so I think this is a very good decision for us to consider.
Appreciate the information.
I think it's good points made by the other council members. But I think one of the things that I focus on is like if this can be funded through ARPA funds. Like theoretically, like probably a very poor statement. It's not free money. It obviously came from the federal government. However, it's not coming out of the tax levy from our own city. So in theoretically, one could say this is a free market study that we're getting without having to commit to annual, you know, service plans or subscriptions. So with that being said, I move to authorize the city manager to contract with MGT for a classification and compensation study as outlined in their proposal at a cost not to exceed $28,475.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10D, review and possible action relating to 2025 CIP bath house shower improvement at Rock River Park Aquatic Center, Park and Rec Director Dayton.
Good evening. So this is a phase two of this CIP item for the aquatic center mechanical and shower replacement. We, as you recall, the first phase came up back in April for a strainer or a pump strainer and basket that was approved back in April. And the remaining funds would be then used for showerhead replacement and a water heater replacement in the bath house. Staff reached out to three different plumbers. Two of them provided a quote for us with both of them actually being over the budgeted amount that we had left to spend. So like I mentioned before, we pivoted and found a solution that worked for us. And with Mr. Plumber providing the lowest quote, that we reached out to their team to, I guess, make a solution that fit our needs, but then also was caused. to, I guess, make a solution that fit our needs, but then also was cost conscious as well. So in the two, two original quotes were provided to you in the packet and the updated pricing was also provided. The highest or the, the biggest cost that we had were the shower heads. And so with this adjustment, we were actually able to reduce the expenses to $23,508.84, which then brought us back to under budget by $766.16. The project is paid for or is funded through 24, 25 borrowed funds. So that being said, we would, or staff would recommend that city council authorize staff to accept the proposal from Mr. Plumber for the purchase and installation of the BAC EZ 80199 N water heater, two three-group shower fixtures for single-head shower fixtures at a cost not to exceed $23,508.84. I will answer any questions that you may have.
I like the choice you made. You pivoted, you saved us money and Mr. Plumber is a local businessman who also has a good reputation.
Yeah. Yeah, the two, the two contractors that reached out, both are, we've worked with in the past, so it was, it was nice to have them supply a quote.
I move to authorize staff to accept proposals from Mr. Plumber for the purchase and installation of a BAC EX 80199 N water heater, two three-group shower fixtures and four single-head shower fixtures at a cost not to exceed $23,508.84.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 11 miscellaneous, tonight we have none. Item 12, claims appropriations and contract payments. 12A, review and possible action relating to the verified claims as presented by the Director of Finance and authorized payment. Our cover.
The list is provided. It was emailed yesterday, the verified claims. Happy to answer any questions if anyone had any at any time, certainly feel proud. If something comes up after tonight, feel free to reach out.
I move to approve the verified claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any debate? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Council Hattiebe?
Aye.
Council Johnson?
Aye.
Council Les Goher?
Aye.
Council Schultz?
Aye.
President Jacob?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 13, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any debate? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are adjourned.